Do you have the meeting started?
Alright, alright. I look forward to my chance.
Alright, we'll call the meeting order. We'll start with roll call.
Hey, Mayor Menne.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nelson.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes. Alright, do we have any motions to approve? Again. Seven. Motion to sign one. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? You're done? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from 4-3, 2019?
So moved.
Seven.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. I'll abstain.
Abstain from Jones? Any of you opposed? Alright, next we'll move to bills. We have bills in the packet for payment. If there are motion to approve, let's have discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seven.
Alright, discussion questions? You're done? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we got a pretty quick, pretty full agenda today. Lot of items that have discussion. So, we have to come through different things. We'll probably, um, probably keep it to certain old plan. Do some floor points, things like that. Especially as we're going through reports, you've got actionable items. So we'll make sure we go through them right away. First item we'll jump to right now is public comments. Public input on any non-agenda items. So, anybody from the public like to talk about a non-agenda item for a moment? Mayor Monahan, there. And what we'll do being our, our hearing, our ordinance is at 7:05. The order's 7:02. We'll jump down to visitors. And, I thought I saw Ricky here earlier. Yep, request a place seating in the city right away.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I guess what I'm looking for is just to put a couple of bistro tables out. And I don't know what the rules are for that. Or if there's something that I should be doing.
Sure.
Do that instance for so people can sit outside. They like to ice their tea and they like to sit out and visit. And especially since the weather's getting nicer. So, I didn't know if that was a possibility or not.
And are you, anything on the Main Street side? And thinking of your business and trying to do lots there?
It could be on either side of the, yeah. Either on first or second Main Street, whatever that is. So then, yeah, on Main Street.
Yep. Spring, summer, fall months, is that what you're talking about?
This one, it's, yeah. This one nicer weather.
So Teresa, do we have enough room there to be ADA compliant?
I was just kind of discussing with Craig. I'm not sure if there would be, there's nothing between the light pole and the steps coming out of the mound.
Yeah, you'd probably have to move it either, you know, back to the west if you're on the south side. Or wise to the north if you're on the east side there.
Okay. Of the light pole.
Yeah, you'd want to keep one of five foot clear zone there.
Okay.
On the corner.
So there's something else I have to do then, sir?
Trying, you know, if you want to put something out, I, I'm just curious. And I'm only with you guys on this to know if you put something on the sidewalk and it's in the right of way. It's up to the council whether it stays there or not. Is that, I mean, that's pretty clear on that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's city property. So it's up to the council if you want to allow something on the city right of way or not. Like that, you just want to make sure the sidewalks are still ADA-able, you know? We could get in trouble that way.
And it would just be during business hours as well. I mean, I would take them in at night so they wouldn't be sitting out there.
Well, right now, there's benches on the sidewalk.
Yeah, we've got the benches up against the, yeah. So you've still got, you know, your.
I assume that's what you're, you're going to put the table against the building, right?
It'd be close to the building. It won't be sitting light right out in the middle of the sidewalk.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not planning on blocking the sidewalk.
No, no.
So, I don't see any problem with it. Because the bistro table is only, I don't frequent bistro very often. But when I do, the tables aren't that.
Last time you were in France.
I actually wasn't in France after the bistro in Europe.
Alright, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Discussion? You're on vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Ryan, entry.
Stop by.
Thank you for starting your business in Hartford.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alright, we're right at 7:05. So over 7:05 hearing for the first reading of ordinance 665, the proposed changes to the city building ordinance. For discussion, or motion to approve the first reading. Put the phone back if you don't want to talk to me.
And if you notice, the P and Z board did, um, they've talked about it a couple of times now. But at their meeting last night, um, they looked over the changes that you have in your packet. And actually, they had an update to the description of what a Z lot is. So that's changed. I put that update in the box for you as well. And I've inputted on the table. So, um, they were okay with the lot and yard regulations as previously presented to you in your packet. Um, though, we did do some clarification in the definition. So if you want to read through that and have any questions. But mainly this came about, I think we touched base on it a little bit at our last meeting. But Costello's Development would like to incorporate some of these Z lots. And their, Z lots are mainly smaller lots. They're kind of focused more on empty nesters or snowbirds. Or people who don't want maintenance because they're usually under an HOA, you know, for the maintenance part of it. So, after discussion, looking at, you know, different developments in Sioux Falls has, um, Brandon, Harrisburg. It's another option we could offer in Hartford. They're looking at, basically, the only thing we're changing for Z lots is a smaller lot width. So instead of the 66, it'd be down to the 55. And then smaller side yard setbacks. So instead of seven feet, it'd be five feet. But the lot area stays the same. So, they're still going to have that, have to have that 7,500 square feet. So, you know, they may be a little bit deeper. They're just going to be a little closer together. We put in the description that they all have to be in there at an angle. So they're all uniform. Um, we also, the first thing we put in the description is it has to be approved by the city engineer. Because we want it to come to the city as part of their development plans. So we want it seeing in the plans. And we want the developer to specify which ones, what he's going to, you know, have a Z lot for. We want that to be okay with the placement and with the engineer. And then the city approve those plans. We don't want a lot here in the middle of town, you know, one Z lot deciding to go in for some reason. You know, that's not, you know, uniform or, you know, with our regulations. So, you know, the description we'll put has to be approved by the city engineer. That the, all the houses have to be set at an angle, you know? So all have to be uniform that way. And then the other thing we talked about is the driveway. Instead of, our current regulations is 36 feet wide to be the maximum. We set it only at 25 feet. So, since these are going to be smaller frontages, we wanted to make sure we had enough boulevard area there for snow piling and snow removal, that enough, you know, permanent bull surface there. So, um, okay. P and Z, the community this then, yesterday, and they have a recommendation to approve this. And this would allow, ask them to move forward with what he's presenting in his plans right now. Or future developer to incorporate some into his development.
What does this affect existing, um, developments? Where there's some houses built that aren't in a Z lot, but it can, it add them?
So, so that, you're right. So like say, you talk about like presidents that have land that's not plotted out yet. You know, they could revise their plans, send them to the engineer. Um, he would look them over and they could incorporate it on their undeveloped land. So, they could add them.
So if I'm a homeowner and I buy land and Chris comes to build a house, then across the street was not Z lots. They could change their mind and create Z lots?
I think the, the Z lot would have to be replatted first, which would come through the board, you know, for that situation. And I guess I'm not, I'm not sure how you guys developed the, the rate of the new zoning. Or is there still a, a permanent use underneath?
So it would be under our usage, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a permanent use under those benches.
So it needs to be plotted that way?
It would have to get replatted really.
So then they'd have to get replatted.
Yep, they'd have to get replatted. Or if they're never been plotted before, they still got to go then through the city engineer. So both things will have to go through the city to get approval of.
Okay. And you wouldn't want to bother this one, right? You'd make them, they have to come with that.
Yeah.
A plan.
I mean, you're going to have to come with a series of.
Yeah, believing in, even if it says the city engineer, you know, we're going to be talking to staff and you guys probably if we have something that just doesn't.
We'd want it to fit the area, yeah.
That's the only concern I have. If I built a house and then all of a sudden things changed on me, how would I feel as a homeowner?
Right, exactly.
And if that's the case, they want to replot it, then as a homeowner, I could come down and state my case. Okay, so, you know, with that being said, um, between 77th and 81st on South Minnesota Avenue, there's a pile. And just to the east of that is multi-million dollar homes. So, to consider that. Every time I've seen them, whenever we've gone through those areas, they're, they're nicely done, really well maintained. It's usually a pretty mature homeowner that, that has that nearing retirement, that retirement. Doesn't want to, doesn't want to maintain their own snow, doesn't want to mow their own lawn. No kids in the house. They're, they're enjoying their years that way. And it's usually just a nice way to have, um, a little bit of a community that way. So, there's nothing in our ordinance that states it has to be a HOA or anything of that nature.
No. We discussed that a little bit with P and Z board. And I don't think that's the city's place to, whether to put it under an HOA or not. That's a developer's.
What's the purpose of the side yard versus seven?
Well, if you only have 55 feet of, of frontage, you know, you're going to have less area for your house. So I think that's why you went from the seven down to the five feet, just so.
So you can put a bigger house on a narrow piece of property?
Yeah, kind of pretty much. I mean, it just comes down to, because you have less frontage there.
So where's the five feet come from? So, if neighbor A has five feet from his corner, neighbor B has five feet from his corner, that's 10 feet and that's the fire code.
Yep, that's, yep, yep, that way.
So those are going to be 10 for a park?
Yep.
Just to meet fire code?
Yep.
So with that being said, our street standards haven't changed. We're still going to have 33 foot, 66 total foot on our streets, right? So we don't have to worry about fire trucks or evens and things of that nature getting in and out of there.
Yeah, yeah, the streets will, yeah. Nothing's changed there.
We don't specifically limit it to be on a cul-de-sac. But, um, I guess with our street width, that shouldn't be an issue either.
I guess, I, I mean, I don't know if I've ever seen a Z lot on a cul-de-sac, I guess. I think you usually see one.
I'm thinking of like a peninsula or a dead end. So let's speak with a cul-de-sac at the end of the. So just to play devil's advocate, if five feet's okay for Z lots, why isn't five feet okay for some of them? Do you have those lot layouts? I'm here for a partner, by the way, on the planning and zoning board. So, without drawing a picture of it, but with the, the way the Z lots layout and the way the houses would be placed on the Z lot, they would run parallel to the angle portion of that lot. There'd be five feet away from that. The next one would be on the opposite side of that five foot setback on the backside of it. So you're five feet away from the side yard, but then you got the, the way the frontages and.
You're not going to, you're not going to be, what you're saying is you're not going to have houses.
You're going to be like five and 15, so you're going to probably be like 20, 20 feet apart by the time you, because you have to stay there and back and you can drive within there. So the houses are going to actually be along this part. You're not going to, I don't think you'd be able to mirror them. You wouldn't be able to mirror that house where you put them back to back.
They're not 10 feet apart.
No. But I mean, there would be, there would never be a case where you could mirror, basically take the same house and mirror it and go on the driveways out the opposite direction because it wouldn't work. The way the lots lay out, and I sent a picture to Jeremy and, uh, three of you guys here how.
You have several pictures in your packet too of that.
Yeah, hey, okay, so I understand the concept of the way they sit in their carpet. They're not, I shouldn't say crooked, but they don't sit in their, or on the street. So, I assume you're talking about the side yard. See, on a standard piece property, the side yard is obviously, the side yard, in the front yard is front yard, back yard, back yard. On this, here, everything's at a 45 degree angle or something. So, is your front yard from the closest corner? 25.
Front step of the street.
25, for to the closest corner. To the closest corner. Yeah. So, so that corner will be 25 foot off property line and then the rest of the structure will go back from there. Yeah, and you're, so like, there's only going to, so like the parallel part of that house that's running on that skewed angle, that's going to be at five. And then you're on the backside in the corner, you may run into five feet. This packet doesn't have the. Well, just, you, you're here for a minute.
Your front yard is still up front.
It's still off the street, yes. There could be address off the street. So your front yard is still the street.
So here you're going to have, here you'll have your 20, your 25.
From that corner.
Yep. You're run parallel to five, you do it for five feet.
Yeah, but there'll be another one right here.
Right here.
Five foot out there. You have two to five plus, here are your five plus whatever you have to do. We have a third, look at that. Yeah, that's coming off of GIS though, I mean.
Right.
There's nothing out here that's going to surprise us, is there? Oh, this year's date?
It's always good.
You, you know what I'm saying? Because this looks to be like 10 and 10 and 10 and 10. Yeah, the way those are, those are designed or, yeah, they've got them, they're blown up. They're filling in this area, which.
This is a garage.
I know.
And that's the front of that house. And that's the back of that house.
Yeah, they're maximizing this, they're maximizing this, that house there.
I should, the, the, the spaziness, they're not 10 feet apart.
Yeah, that's off of, those are the ones off of Grant and Craig, right? Yeah, these aren't here, that's, that's, that's what they issue on. That's, I'm just, I'm just concerned about that five feet.
Craig, do we have any other questions for Johnson?
Just, if I could answer your question from earlier from Eric about the five foot, I mean, on a standard lot, why it's, why that isn't sufficient for a standard lot? There, if you go to Sioux Falls, there've been a setback on the, on the side yard is five feet. I think that's just been a preference that Hartford's had is to go to seven. There's, there's a number of towns that are at seven, but five feet is really the minimum you see from any town.
Sioux Falls and Harrisburg are.
I say that Harrisburg has that as well for their kind of, they also have the smaller lot widths too. Sioux Falls' lot width standard is 50 feet.
50 feet.
Yeah, so we're not even going down as far as their standard.
Right, where this maintains a pretty good size square footage per lot.
Yeah, so you keep our lot area, yeah.
Yeah, I did some math on these, these were like 9,000, aren't they?
Are they in healthies?
Yep.
Yeah, they're about 1,000.
Sioux Falls is 50, this is 55. So these are a bunch bigger ones.
Alright. Do we have any other questions or any other motions? First reading, either way, we'll look at it again in two weeks. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Alright, you vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Thanks for your help.
Um, keeping a picture?
Well, stamp this is, this is exhibit A.
I'll be back in two weeks.
So, let me ask you a question while I'm inside here.
Chief Schumacher, come on up.
Can I ask one question for you?
As long as you're quick.
Yeah, so, so here's a garage. Where's their front window at?
It's on, it's on this side of the house.
So they literally look at the back of the other house?
Yes. Actually, the Z was a zero setback, is what it stood for. And, but it doesn't work because you got to have an air conditioner or hang, overhang or something. So, it was the shape of the lot, it was kind of the shape of the lot and a zero setback. And they're like, the zero setback doesn't work. We need to go to.
Certain setback.
Yeah. Five foot. That was the concept.
Go ahead, Chief.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, councilors. A quick recap of March. March ran 29 total calls, 12 of them within the city of Hartford. Uh, some of the items we were training on in March are automated defibrillator, our Lucas cardiac compression machine, and advanced airways on the EMS side. Fire side, we trained on radio communication, scene size up, and incident command system. Uh, some trainings coming up in April. EMS side, immunological emergencies, infectious disease at-risk populations, and EMS safety. Uh, the fire side will be training on ladder truck operations and training on our new tender operations. Just really want to touch base on last week's storm event between the ice and snow and the power outages. Just want to thank a few NBE Sunshine Foods. We had the fire station open for the community. Uh, Sunshine Foods provided, provided food and meals for anybody that wanted to stop down and partake in that. We had some fire department staff and other volunteers helping to cook that up at the station. Also liked to thank the Red Cross. They provided cots and blankets for you, so had we had any overnight events or anybody that needed shelter overnight down there. And then I'd also like to thank City Snap, City Staff for snow removal, to clear access, to open it up for the community to get in there. Uh, some of the upcoming activities we have going on, uh, this Friday, April 9th, we'll be doing our inspection and hopefully delivery on our new tender. So hopefully we have that in town from Friday afternoon here. On May 2nd, that is the day we're partnering with the Red Cross. Did you have smoke detector installs in Hartford here? Uh, we're targeting 200 to 250 homes to try and hit and install smoke detectors. Uh, with that program, Red Cross will be out the week before putting our little door hanger flyers on the area we're targeting. And I work with city staff to, to find the area we really wanted to target in town. Uh, so they'll be getting in town, uh, that week before, getting the notice out. We'll be going out approximately 5:30 on May 2nd, uh, trying to, as I said, hit that many homes. We'll be installing as many smoke detectors as needed in each home. Uh, they are a 10-year life, uh, smoke detector and it's all free of charge to the homeowners. On May 19th, we will be hosting our annual pancake feed fundraiser for the department. So, that's really all I have, questions from the council.
How many people did you have attend or stop by the fire department during the outage?
I really don't know. We had rotating staff there throughout the day. We didn't keep an official count. We just kept the coffee going and food going. We had people stop to buy, you know, maybe to charge their phone, get on the computer. Others came hanging out for a while, ate. It was a little bit of reprieve, especially for those that didn't have a generator or other source of power or heat.
Was there any lessons learned as far as, you know, the way things went down? In case there is a, an actual, let's just say, tornadic emergency or something of that sort? Anything that, that you guys learned in this process of taking these people in?
Well, you know, we, we always need to be very proactive on things as, as a community as a whole. You know, we, we, the part we were probably most concerned about, especially if it was going to drag on longer than it actually did. Or maybe the people who didn't have the ability to get out of their homes on their own. You know, how are they going to get a notification out that they needed help, they needed assistance? That was probably one of your greater concerns.
Okay. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you to you and everybody on your team. Everything you did for that, I know that was, that was helpful even just knowing that was there for people at half their coming in the second night of power outage. If there, if there's something else there, so I appreciate that.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, recreational director report, name?
Yeah, hi. Um, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of things and then we'll kind of get to the actionable items. Um, so basically, um, still just keep kind of working to maintain and build relationships in the community. Um, very important to figure out what's all available here. Um, scheduling's been my main task the last couple, um, weeks, both for soccer, softball, and baseball. Um, also then, working with, working on social media. Um, I finally got the Facebook page from the Sports and Rec Committee. So that's been productive. Um, I've gained about 10 likes since I took that over a couple of weeks ago. Um, I also created a Summer Park Rec Program page, um, which I think it says 32 or 33 in your packet, but I'm up to 40 now. Um, and then also planning to, um, roll out Instagram, kind of once I can actually get outside, just as another platform to, um, show off our community. And, yeah, and people like pictures, so. Um, anyways, um, I kind of want to focus on, um, kind of the Sports and Rec Committee. Um, what we kind of came up with on Sunday nights. Um, this, since it was Sunday night, it's not, it didn't make it in your packets this week. Um, but the main focuses of what we discussed, um, were a fundraising option, uh, with Blue 42 for Chase the Ace or Chase any card in the deck raffle, um, in which, um, basically it's, it's a 50-50 raffle, but it's modified. And, um, I can get into more detail if you would like. But basically, um, it's a good opportunity for Blue 42 to host an event, as well as us to, um, take in and fundraise. And other communities have been successful, but other communities also haven't done it right with taxes and laws. So we need to make sure we do it right if we do it on. So we're working on that for the next, um, meeting and checking into things that we have that delegated. Another thing, um, that we discussed are the scoreboards for the sports complex. They actually just arrived into town today. Um, so we'll be working, um, with Craig and his staff, um, hopefully to install them. And they said they would agree to do, um, basically the work, um, that they could. Um, and if we need to contract it out, we can. And the Sports and Rec Committee wanted that, um, to come out of their main city fund, um, for that work. And then, um, finally, um, from that, um, it was decided that we would like, um, a, like an overall bid for the remaining, um, complex project. Um, so, we have one for the next two fields, um, that should be going in the next two years out there. Um, but it was decided that we would like to have, be able to have the whole bid in order to itemize and price, um, pretty much every piece of the complex. Um, so neither of those last two are actionable items tonight. Um, but I think discussion would be, um, good and warranted so that we can get them on the agenda next time and hopefully move forward, um, with either of those. Um, so if we have some discussion now or questions, um, for me or Matt Evans is also here, um, on those last couple of things that are up. And then I'll kind of wrap up my report, but.
Um, when you are talking about, you know, needing more pictures and stuff for your social media, eventually as you get outside and, and get those pictures, I'm assuming they're going to involve like children and the activities. How do you go about like the permission to post?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, for our sports, or for our Park Rec program, we added a photo release to the sign up this year. So we're covered there. Um, I'm working with the different associations, um, to get that. I'm working with the different associations to get that arranged with them before I go and take pictures of their kids. I understand that can be definitely an issue, so I'm working with them on that. And we don't have an official plan in place since the registration, but started basically before I took the position. But we'll work with them closely to get pictures and get sort of, and get a permission, as that's very important, especially with youth sports, so it's in, it's on my mind.
All right, discussion about Mitch, you may be able to help with this a little bit here is. Arbor Day Sports and Rec, one of the things that they came away from the last meeting that you just mentioned was that, hey, what's it gonna take to get everything else wrapped up there and how would that itemize out? Do we have something like that on the shelf, or does that take a known plan?
He was mentioning bids, I think we were talking about cost estimates, but we're kind of wanting at this stage. We had done some cost estimates in the past, they probably just need to be brushed up with current pricing. So yeah, we can sure put something together here for them.
I left that meeting Sunday night with the impression that. Let me find the motion here. Motion by Tim, second by Norm, to get a full bid from Stockwell for remaining cost of completing the project. Motion carried. So if I interpret that correctly, Arbor Day Sports and Rec is willing to be on the hook to have you design or at least come up with a cost estimate to do that.
So there, you're saying a proposal to design the facility, is that?
Yep. Motion by Tim, second by Norm to get a full bid. So I guess essentially they would like your cost estimate for the remaining costs to complete the project.
I don't think you can do that in the last year.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can, yeah. I mean, I think the appropriate place to start is with the cost estimate of the facility. That's probably where I would suggest starting, so you know what the cost of, the total cost of. Cause I'm assuming it's irrigation, sports lighting, those are kind of the questions that I would have to, to know. The full build-out.
They want the, the whole cake.
Well, and I just wonder though, like what good is? To get a cost estimate, that's gonna give you some estimates versus this is what we would do for a bid. We're gonna be who to, it's gonna, it's gonna come through here if we're gonna decide if we're gonna bid it or not. So I think if we want to have anybody pay for that, that level of detail, that we need to be pretty sure we think we're gonna bid that, that we're gonna go out and do that, let those bids out. In my opinion, otherwise, the cost estimates. A good idea.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I think this motion is missing.
No, I think they're my duties, I'm sorry.
I think it's missing the teeth, and that's what I really want to stress to that group on Sunday night is, how are you gonna pay for it?
Well, I, I think there might be some problems with the wording, I guess maybe within the group that maybe didn't understand. I think, I think what we were looking for, maybe it came out with the way it came off of the minutes with the bid word, that I think we are looking more for cost estimates to, to, when we do come back, have a, you know, better number of what it looks like. Mitch already had, we have the cost estimates for, you know, the concession restroom up to, you know, the, the current softball fields. We have a cost estimate for the remaining two softball fields, but also then, like you said, the, the big picture as far as finishing out what would be for the parking in between if we do go lighting. So as we come back, we have a, a starting point, I guess, for, for the council. And then we can prioritize our lists and then at least be able to narrow down what we think we're gonna be able to, to get and prioritize based on cost estimates and. So I think there might have been some confusion with those of us or those that maybe aren't familiar with the.
What I'm confused about is, how does this group expect this council to pay for it? Cause they keep, I, I came within that meeting with a very strong sense of, of a group that's not satisfied, they're not content, they're not happy, they're dissatisfied with myself, they're dissatisfied with this council, and those folks aren't here to share their dissatisfaction with us.
Well, I'd say there's a mixed group, and there's a group, you know, that, that has seen what's happened over the past two years, you know, some of the newer members haven't seen, you know, maybe don't appreciate as much as what has happened to see, you know, that what we have happened in the past year has been actually substantial. So, kind of like if, you know, you might've been thrown under the bus, same thing, you know, they realize that it's not the entire group, just like you're not the, you know.
Entire council.
Right. And I thought that one person had, had mentioned something to you later, but maybe not.
It still is a sore spot and will continue to be if the group feels less unhappy. The group needs to come together quick, quickly with their focus before the wheels, you know, quickly fall off the bus.
I think this was part of the, having the cost estimate, being able to prioritize and really see what, you know, what we'd be looking at as far as, you know, real prices and what makes sense to, to come back to the council with. I, I think there might be, yes, we have some kind of pie in the sky, you know, we want everything, but not realizing that there are other decisions that the council has to make and has, has to make with other things going on in the community. So, but I think just with the cost estimate for kind of everything will help narrow down the priority list, I guess.
All right, I get where you're coming from. And we've got several items that are on the agenda that need to be decided on the night. We've given an example kind of this. If you have a cost estimate or something that, that we can get over to Nate so we can get it to the Sports and Rec, I think that would be great. Something that's fairly, fairly easy that way. Otherwise, let's move to.
Can I chime in quick, Mayor? Just one quick thing.
As long as it's quick.
Yep. I noticed that on Nate's report, one of his challenges is communication with your committee. I've ventured that if that doesn't improve, we're gonna have a huge problem here in a short amount of time. I've had this discussion, we've had this discussion before. We hired a guy, if you guys aren't talking to him, we're gonna have a problem. I'm just telling you. That's it.
All right, we've got the piece in our packet for reviewing or approving field usage. Anything you want to add on that, Nate?
Basically, it's just kind of the rental agreement we put together based off the field fees last time. It was advised by our attorney. Oh, sorry, my bad, I misheard you. Basically, they're just mostly basic safety rules, as well as protecting our property by posting something, you know, don't hang on fences, don't, et cetera. There's, it's a small list, I'm open to additions. I sent it to both the baseball and softball associations. They either heard great or I didn't hear anything back from baseball, so.
Do we want our maintenance questions going directly to Terry?
It's a good question, I can, I can always adapt that.
Probably you better go to me.
Okay, I cannot edit that, that's not very good. Good point.
What are you looking for on this, or?
Just a motion to approve it, cause if you're good with it, then we will pull these on both the fields, so the public's aware of it.
Make a motion to approve.
With the, with the correction, what Craigian is the maintenance, so I'm okay.
Motion, second? Okay, discussion?
For both of them?
Uh, just the first one, I'm gonna look at this realm one a little bit closer. I'm just talking the first one, is that all right Travis?
Yeah, absolutely.
Field usage, yeah? Yeah.
Uh, to approve this.
Yeah, now we're changing Terry's query on the contact.
Who were the discussion vote? Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Then we got the field, the rental agreement, all right?
Changes from the first time, or is it pretty?
Um, it's, you know, involves the same fees we discussed at the last meeting. Just, you know, some more legal speak in there as far as policies, getting details and information, so we have something to communicate with, as well as clarifies that it doesn't include jockeying a field, which is important, cause some people assume that, and lays out some policies as well as some clauses, especially with insurance is important, liability insurance is important that we have from whoever's renting our fields.
Was reviewed by our insurance and Larry, so.
Man, is it a problem for the groups to have a million dollar policy, or do you carry that?
As far as the.
Liability?
I'm not sure as far as the softball and baseball association.
I talked with Eric Queenslyler and.
Not a part of either of those groups?
Yeah, for their tournament, they have, it's certified through USA Softball. They apply for insurance and he told me it should be at least a million dollar policy.
If you can't get the baseball gear to talk to you and rent our field, should be no problem either.
Yeah, I would agree. We did have one update today, that we did have somebody reach out to Matt and say they were gonna start coming to our meetings, and they also sent out an email that was fairly straightforward to a couple of the baseball representatives, saying, you know, you need to communicate with us in order to use our facilities and have a voice, so. Just so you're aware.
This is just for tournaments, not practice?
Correct.
Motion approved?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Um, I, I'm looking at this and, and, and right now, as you well know, an all-day tournament, the field's gotta be dragged more than once, and I'm, I'm, I'm missing that in here. I mean, what's the plan, jam three days, man, for example? I mean, you're gonna drag that five, six, if not eight times during the day. And I don't, I see here it says.
Including dragging the infield between games.
There's different rental options, basically.
Rental with maintenance.
Yeah, there's basic and then there's rental with maintenance. The basic rental, you're responsible for maintenance. Basically, we'll set it up for you, drag it, make sure there's four potties and the trash is taken out essentially. With the rental with maintenance, you can have a city worker out there that will work for, will cover eight hours and they'll be able to drag in between games.
All right, all right, cool. I just missed a little bit. Obviously, that's important.
Holy discussion? All right, who vote? Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Um, yeah, so then just, I kind of have some future plans, what I'm thinking going forward. If you have any comments on those, let me know. Otherwise, I did include those challenges. Basically, we're, yeah, working to improve communication both with the committee as well as baseball. And then, yeah, the pictures, it's kind of a time thing, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for your report. All right, who, who has the chamber and down the building? Port with Jesse?
Good evening, council, and your, and your package here is my report, any questions on that? If not, move on to my proposal for the downtown revival, third revival to revive, the Drive to Revive Committee. Lots of reviving tonight, hopefully. I think vote first, a number of the downtown businesses that had to discuss the temporary development of downtown. We've added three new businesses in the last six to eight months downtown, and there seems to be a lot more interest in creating some sort of association to work on a number of different items. And so some of them are here tonight, to answer any questions you might have about this. I know in the past there was concerns about opening up any more committees if there wasn't any interest. So I think a number of businesses have expressed interest in that possibility. And you're packing your proposal, we're asking for you to consider bringing back the Drive to Revive Downtown Committee.
Well, I'm really happy to see that you have, you have good turnout for it, you know, see a lot of faces from the downtown area and people that are, that are interested in doing that. I'm curious on, on this, is that, here's what I'm saying is that if you restart everything up and it becomes a, basically a city group, what are your thoughts about sustainability of that, of that group?
Meaning financially or leadership-wise or both? And so that's.
Absence, all of those kind of things.
Absolutely, and so I, I have my vision for it, but my vision might be different from what the members of business community might want it to be. If approved, I would see this, our next step would be having other businesses that are interested coming together, creating an association similar to what you might see in, say, downtown Sioux Falls, where each business would pay membership fee to the downtown or Drive to Revive Downtown Committee that would help with programming. In, in my mind, we would have all this put together in the next three months, so that we would have a bunch of requests, a bunch of put together for you for August to consider for improvements to be made in downtown or programming to be put in place. You know, I see this organization as a, similar to what you would see at downtown Sioux Falls organization, trying to bring more businesses to your downtown, creating programming that brings people to your downtown, and also working to implement strategies with the city of Hartford that would improve the quality of downtown, make it a much more aesthetically pleasing place to visit.
Okay.
Leadership-wise, you know, we, we follow the bylaws from back, back when it was around. They're, they're, they're pretty much your classic cookie cutter organization bylaws. And so, as, as long as there's some interest in it, every year you reelect officers, I would see it as continuing in that form, with my office helping implement programming, communicating with the city of Hartford.
And this is a complete, almost a completely different group. There's a few familiar faces from the old Drive to Revive Downtown, but a big part of it, there's, there's a lot of different business owners in the group. And it's part of me wonders, are you gonna need, are you gonna need funds freed up between now and August?
I think the only funds that we need to get started is just that, the funds that are required to get it back as an active organization.
Roughly, what is that? Thirty dollars?
So.
There's, there's a state.
Thirty dollars. Thirty dollars with the state to reinstate it, plus every ten dollars, it was inactive, so it's gonna be right around ninety to a hundred dollars, I'm not sure what they come to it as a year. Plus then, any attorney fees to file the paperwork and, I'm not sure what the guess is on that, probably a couple hundred there or whatnot, so. I think all is well, and it can be under five hundred dollars, I, I just don't know what attorney fees will be.
Right now, there's money in the Drive to Revive?
There is, there's right at two hundred dollars in the Drive to Revive, cause there's about twenty-two hundred, but two thousand is earmarked for the mural, so there's about a couple hundred in there, which, which may be enough to reinstate it.
That's all my questions.
Make the motion to revive the revive drive.
Yeah, second?
Yeah.
Okay, discussion?
I just want to have one reportedly quick. Ricky Kuzwah, Becker Guard's been, has been instrumental in getting this going again. She's called by office numerous, numerous times, emailed me numerous times. She's cut off articles from different publications, talking about Drive to Revive, and so. It's great to see people like Ricky and the rest of the folks here today that are interested in making this going forward. It's not just me pushing this, it's, it's the business community.
Thank you. All right, is that who vote? Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
And Brenneman?
Yes.
All right, anything else for Jesse, any other things you want to add?
Nope, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we got our city engineer report.
The only thing I wanted to touch on or then like add is we have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for tomorrow, and we received a schedule earlier this week, the contractor's planning to start on Monday for next week, so we'll start to see the barricades go up and whatnot, starting Monday.
Starting Monday?
Yeah. They'll probably start with the, the Storm Sewer on Ninth Street, that extension. Uh, they'll probably start with the, the storm sewer on Ninth Street, that extension. So that's probably where you'll see them start working, you'll probably start seeing them excavating the, the grade along Bannamark Avenue as well too. Um, and then the only, we have an action item for the, the Ninth Street cost estimate. We invited that, Teresa, estimating right now, we just, we just simply took the numbers from Bannamark Avenue. And, you know, we don't have Ninth Street designs, we don't have the full numbers, just a plug-in and spit out an estimate, but we just put it on a curve foot basis, and we're estimating right now about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars based on the pricing that we saw for Bannamark Avenue.
Okay.
And I don't know what the action.
Well, let's put it under so we can discuss it, and if you guys wanna take in the action, you can, or you can just be open for discussion. I did do a figure of what, just roughly what the linear footage is along that portion to see what we would assess back to the property owners. And we have about a hundred and eighty-two thousand that would reimburse that five hundred and sixty thousand, but it's still a chunk for the city's portion.
That's what the estimate before was, four hundred thousand dollars to the city, correct?
Yeah.
That's what I remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Hago is still being elusive?
So I did get a hold, he's been out of town for a couple of weeks. I did get ahold of him on Monday after he would be with me and Jesse again, and he pushed it off. Well, maybe I'll be in later this week. Being elusive, yes. I should've just said, yes.
Is, please chief, or the fire chief just left, didn't he?
Yeah.
Just gonna ask him what would happen if we had to fire a player.
Condition, oh man, it's, it's a bad condition.
It's darn near to the point of necessity. Next to.
Yeah, they got barricaded, don't you? It was a barricade. You can't, you can't tell them that.
Yeah, and trailer courts are worse, yep, because they drain just so bad up there. It's nowhere for the water to go, and everything's just saturated up there.
I seen several pictures of tow trucks buried up there in the, in the, in the trailer court. Wow.
So I think the thing that gives people a little bit of weight is they would like to see how go, say, yeah, I'm for that, so we wouldn't have to do it under a resolution of necessity. How, if we gave him another couple of weeks to get back to us on it and he decided that's something he wanted to do, when does Suko need to know, I guess is the main thing? When, when is this most feasible to get them involved and get things moving?
I mean, ideally would be, you know, as we're getting started here, so that they, I mean, they could always work on Bannamark Avenue as their first phase and eventually when they came into it, you know, they could, they could agree. What we'd wanna try to do is save any mobilization costs, if we could, so I'd say, you know, in the next, we probably really might have a month before they're really gonna be turning and burning out there and getting pretty far along, I'd say.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Hago own the trailer court footage too, he doesn't call that?
Yeah, so he has that whole north side, yeah, because he has the trailer court and then that empty lot on Bannamark and Ninth to the north. And.
Beaver's in, in favor of, I talked to him. Okay? Yeah.
Yeah, Beaver, I'm sure would like to.
He just said it needs to be built big enough to handle the trucks up there.
Yeah.
Sure.
And the old tool that lives on the corner there, in the duplex, he was in a couple of weeks ago, and he wouldn't be opposed to it either, he said, so.
Mitch, is your five hundred and sixty thousand dollar, is that an estimated truck traffic?
Yeah, you know, Bannamark is a thickened asphalt mat as well, and that's five inch mat. We'd probably bump down into a six inch mat on Ninth Street, I'd say, rent those big trucks like that. I, I think we could still get there within that budget.
Alright, what can we do moving forward on this, at this point?
I mean, it depends on if the council wants to just move forward with the resolution of necessity, or do you wanna try and wait till our next meeting to see if Roger Hago will be in on, you know, before the seventh, and then take action at that time? I think we wanna take some kind of action.
I guarantee you, if we move forward, yeah. I make a motion for what the resolution of necessity pages improve Ninth Street.
Second.
Explain your comment, Travis, you guarantee.
Guarantee you, if all of a sudden I had to pay for a hundred, fifteen hundred feet of street improvement, probably come down and talk to people who've been trying to get ahold of me.
Okay, I wanna make sure I understood your, your words correctly. One more thing, want you? Say you're creating a fire.
Okay, well, discussion? Teresa, what's the funding mechanism for that one point four hypothetically? And what's the, yes, or?
So I put in my report, kinda gave you an update on the funding, so rural development funding is what we were originally looking at, and they're so far behind, it's out the window, we won't get. So I have been talking with Dordy and company about doing a self-tax bond on the project, so, and, and bonding it all, so.
What are the interest rates on that, or?
I, I haven't gotten an interest rate back on him yet. I haven't heard back from him yet. He's, I sent him our debt limit and information on our other bonds, and he said, I think it's totally doable. I mean, we definitely have a debt limit right now, we can argue, you know, open.
Twenty-year bond?
Huh?
How many year bond?
Twenty-five year?
Twenty-five year bond. And we don't know the interest rate?
Not yet, he hasn't gotten back to me. He was trying to kinda see, take our other bond, self-tax bonds, and see if it's more beneficial to wrap them up into one if we get a lower interest rate, or if it would be, you know, just do it separately. He's trying to look at the options. Yeah, that just said the interest rates are low now, so, that's why he was kinda looking at that option. Maybe we wanna put it all in to one, it may be more beneficial to the city that way, so.
A larger amount at a lower rate?
Yeah, so he was going to kinda weigh out the options to see what our best bet would be, yeah, so. So he's working on that right now.
I just have one other question, and this is for you, Chris. Are you gonna tell us tonight that we're gonna have to discharge next week out of compliance?
I can tell you that tonight.
You're gonna tell us that tonight?
Not next week.
We are discharging right now.
See, here, here's the joy of being on city council, because Matt wants to finish the sports complex, Travis wants to do two streets, and Chris about ready to tell us that we're gonna have to discharge sewage out of compliance. So pick your poison, how you want your taxes.
I guarantee if we discharge out of compliance, no one's gonna die. But if we can't get an ambulance or a fire truck up to that area, we might have a real problem.
Are we in motion, second? Any more discussion? Okay, move on. Anybody need your motion again?
Travis made the motion, Mark Burnham in the second, to move forward with the resolution of necessity to do the Ninth Street, Street Improvement Project.
I have a quick question. So this would work, or this would be voted on, this resolution of necessity would be voted on at the next council meeting? Is that how this would work?
Yeah, I draft a resolution, and you'd have to come before him to vote on it.
So we give, we would, so this would give us a chance, if, if you were choosing to move forward with this, to communicate the council's intentions with Mr. Hago, correct? Okay, just making sure that we're not.
Yeah, but we're not even agreeing like the Stockholm, prepare bid documents.
Right, right. It's just the next step forward.
To the next, to the next, yeah. Alright, whoa, Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burnham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Come on here. Any other items?
No.
Thank you. Alright, great, public works.
Well, I really don't have anything different to report except for, um, the generators back up and running. We had kind of a emergency situation on us on Friday evening when that power dropped again. We had a generator exacting up and no power down there. Luckily, we had everything back up and running and didn't have any backups, so we struggled for about two hours down there.
That's the city home generator?
That's that, uh, permanent run down at that main lift station.
But temporary upon stage one, is that?
That's, yeah, that was actually given to the city slash fire department a few years ago. Otherwise, the goons, we are discharging. I called the state on Monday, told them, I said, I think we can make our daily limits with ammonia, but I said our thirty days can be difficult, because we're about two inches from coming over top of pond number one and either two are full, so. So we are discharging, and we'll see what results turn out afterwards, so. And then the parks, we are, bathrooms are back open again, so that's why I really had different report.
Chris, are you doing, well, there are public works superintendents that have the goons in the area that are dealing with this as well?
Even ones with mechanical plants are struggling right now, everybody. I just talked to, when I was out tee, or out and up here, Aberdeen had a section of storm sewer that let go with, with a sewer main in there. Their flows went from two million a day to twelve million, so they said basically, we'll get it out clamped. Everybody's like that right now, so.
But even if we had a new twelve million dollar plant, we might be discharged in our compliance?
There's, with, with that type of flow, there's a possibility where they, it's, it's more impossible to, to make a plant to handle the extreme flows, or this, this type of air, would be unbelievably expensive. And then you're trying to treat low flows, and they just don't, you gotta kinda find that happy medium.
Was it planned, some of the, the, the streets that you had to, you know, patch, or whatever? Are we putting asphalt back down on that?
Yeah, as soon as plants open up, they won't open until May sometimes.
Okay, I figured as much, okay.
So once they open up, they'll all get finished cutting, patched, and stuff like that. We just got the worst ones, so cars wouldn't be bottoming on them and stuff like that, so.
What's your general feeling on the roads?
I think this is the worst I've ever seen them in twenty-five years, twenty-six years. But I think ours are way better shaped than a lot of towns I've seen. So we, when you got water table, like up on the fighter up there, when they cut the asphalt off, the water came up and the whole laughter took asphalt out, the water tables are high. So when you're, you got a road, the gravel and everything else is good underneath, it's a good base, but when you got a road that's sitting in water, it just, they can't handle it, so. I know I've been, if I can't get railroad back in shape, I might have the elevator start using First Street, because First Street is actually a truck route, but they don't use it because it's kind of inconvenient for them to get in there. But if they, if I can't get that back in shape, I'm gonna make them sort of use a different route, so.
Is there any concerns with these big, you know, garbage trucks bouncing around town without staring at our roads?
Always a concern, yeah.
Do we need to put some restrictions on our streets?
We looked into it quite a few years ago about doing it, and we set them about as low as I thought we could go with them. I think it's, I can't remember, twenty ton or something like that, I can't remember what ton it just.
Some kind of axle or something, yeah.
So we've got, as far as we, what's that?
City streets are eighteen thousand pounds.
It's out there?
There's an exception for delivery trucks and garbage trucks.
And I, I know we had some pretty good discussion about that quite a few years ago, trying to figure out how to set them. And like I said, the way they are this year, cars are breaking them up, I mean, it's just the way it is, so. And try to get them back in shape soon as we can.
Alright, move on to.
There is, uh, there is some stuff, discussion on shelters, is that what you have up?
Yeah.
Um, so at the last meeting, I wanted to get some numbers for possible lights and stuff in the shelters. And I got a, just an estimate from a local electrician. And we were one light short, so we had that in, so to put lights in six shelters, which, and there's different type of lighting we can use, we're looking at between twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars to put the lights in. Putting plywood on all of them and making it so you could, um.
What was that, house for lights?
For the lights, because you're looking at six lights total, so you're looking at anywhere between twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars, roughly. And until you actually go find a light that you want to put in there, go, you know, get some quotes and stuff, that's kind of rough idea right now, so.
She wanted to be vandal resistant, right?
Yeah, much as you can, I mean, I don't think anything's completely vandal proof, so. So that was at the lights, um, then there's also wanted some prices on what it'd take to, to put plywood in shelters. And the only way to do the shelters properly would be to, the flat surface, completely plywood that, and then also your overhang that's on it, so you're gonna get birds up in there making nests, raccoons, who knows what's gonna crawl up in there, so you'd have to completely box them up tight. To do the six shelters, we're looking at just materials, it'd be about fifty-three hundred dollars, maybe a little more. That's just materials for them. Because it comes up to about a hundred and forty sheets of plywood. So that's the numbers I have, so, you know, we, nothing, say anything about Dale or anything like that. I said, you know, try talking about it, but this is the first year we've had twenty-four hours of coverage in the park. I mean, we should see if the deputies are, can do their job, and if not, do something later in the early summer or whatever. That's kind of my feelings with it, but that's your guys' call if you wanna put lights in or board them up, so be the way. Yeah, skateboards gone, skate parks gone, the bathroom, we're leaving that shut so there's one less spot for them to hide.
We're not even into peak season yet. Dale, what's your thought?
Well, I wasn't really gungho on the plywood, because to me it was like an artist's canvas for the kids. It was pretty. The lights, I thought, would be a very good deterrent, because they wouldn't be able to hide. You know, our sheriffs have to get out of that vehicle and walk up there. Too many times, I call and they drive by. They can't see up in there from the street, and if it's lit up, they're definitely gonna see it. The, some of the, the lights on the shelters on the outside aren't working anyway, I've noticed. You know?
I don't know if you're done watching that, so.
And so, I saw that, and the other day I was looking out and one was blinking and another one was totally off. It's just a deterrent. It's not every kid in town, obviously. We just have a group that I have seen harass this winter, in the spring, a woman in her fifties is walking her dog, I think I told you that story. She wasn't doing anything, and they're harassing her. I see people that start walking and they're gonna go on the sidewalk, and they see the group, and they stop and they turn around. I mean, and then they go the other way. If they do go by them, the verbiage isn't the greatest, you know? And if you do say something to them, okay, can't touch me, those cops can't do anything. You know, it's, it's just, dare me, dare me, dare me, it's gonna happen to me because you can't touch me. And I just, you know, I just wanted to eliminate a problem before it started, basically.
What's curfew hours, eleven o'clock in the park? So why, I mean, just, just for the time being, why can't we, why can't we just track the nighttime patrol that at eleven o'clock, they walk the park and kick everybody out? And then they come back at midnight and walk the park at midnight? Because I don't care who the kids are, I mean, if that happens every night for eight days in a row, they'll think it out. They'll, they'll find something.
We have, um, on, on the sign that you do have in the park, is there like the non-emergency number for the police department? I thought so, okay.
On the bathroom there as well? On that further one?
Call the cops, they're in town. Cost us an extra twenty-some thousand to do that, so.
Travis, I saw a drag race scene in front of Mike Street, literally, two pickups. I called, I didn't see a cop.
Did you win, Scott?
It was me.
Yeah, it was me, oh no, no. But I, I mean, I do call that cop, because I see a lot of it. I don't, you know, I used to, I don't feel this much.
Even if you think nothing's being done, at least the call generates.
Is being recorded?
Generates, generates a report.
That's good, because I don't, I mean, the neighbors I don't call. He tells me he called, I talked to Steve Dick, I know he called, you know, and, and it's just, when you're in the frontage like that, and you do see it, and being an EMT for thirty years, I don't, it isn't pretty picking up a child that's been run over, that's been. It wasn't pretty having that girl be run over by her brother. I mean, those are situations that I don't ever wanna come across again, because it affects, if it doesn't affect those kids, It affects, if it doesn't affect those kids, it affects the EMTs and the community for the loss of the pain. And the suffering that the parents go through and anybody else, you know?
And if you, what I want to say is if you call cops, call nine one one or whoever and report a problem and they don't show up. Then we need to know because they're not doing their job or they're on another call, whatever, but at least we can document saying, hey, we called, you didn't show up. It's gonna be timestamped, they're gonna say, well, we were on an accident on our end. Okay, I get that, you know? But if it's being ignored and this is not just your problem, it's another problem in town. You know, to me, when I get a little ban for it, and I would really like to fire under my seat, so. That's the whole reason we went to twenty-four seven is to prevent and chase out some of the problems we're having in town.
Mark mentioned nine one one and Deputy Albert wrote us that, call nine one one, goes to the same dispatch. You don't, you don't get chastised, they don't spank you, they don't slap you, they don't send you a bill, call nine one one, everybody knows that number.
The, um, the one thing.
They say the old versus what's your emergency. Same person answering the phone.
The last time I called, they said, do I want to be, do I want the cops to talk to me? And I said, yes, I do.
Yeah, I asked you, I didn't tell you my call, too.
So he talks to me before. Don't talk to me before, you talk to me after, you know? Did you see them? Did you find them? And is it gonna be resolved? You know, I think that's the action you want is, you know, is there a resolution to the problem? Is it gonna be safe?
What's the argument? We have any emotions? Thanks for getting those prices together.
Yep. Keep them back, keep them back in mind.
Thank you, Dale.
You're welcome.
All right, Karen's report, finance office?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. Um, just wanted to remind you to look at the attendance chart. I will add tonight, of course, but, um. Let me know if I may first, if I omitted a meeting or anything, because I'll do payroll on the first for you guys.
Questions, Karen?
Uh, just one more special meeting for me. What was Sunday? Oh, there's sports going on.
Caught that when I saw their minutes, so, okay.
Always only two, two things you're for. For city administrator.
Um, just, just a couple of dates from my report. Um, summer help, we, I think have pretty much filled all the positions except I would like to hire at least a couple more lifeguards. We, we've got six now that we can go with, um, four of them are gonna be kind of splitting their time between lifeguarding and assistant managing. Like to have a couple more, so we're still gonna be taking applications if anybody's interested. Um, otherwise, though, I think Public Works, we've had a few, um, come in for that now and placed on a few interviews, so I think we're. Be okay through the summer and be nice to maybe have more of them too, but I think we'll be okay and, and. Everything else at the park, we're like, and whatnot, we, we've got full, so. I mean, I think we'll be able to open the pool and get started, but, um, we'll still be looking for help. Um, and then just, uh, we kind of talked a little bit, just gave you an update on, um, you know, the financing for our project, like we said earlier. We'll be looking at doing a bond now for the Bandermark project and then for the sewer up western, um, we're looking at submitting the applications. We're working on them now this month. CCOG is helping us for, um, lip funds and through the GOED and doing, um, SRF funding for that, so. And, um, action item that I have undermined is that the South Dakota Municipal League is holding, um, Human Resource School. And, um, I put a copy of the agenda in there for you guys to review, um. It's gonna go over, you know, hiring, firing, working with employees, so, um, I'd like permission to be able to attend that in period June eleventh and twelve.
Motion proves out government of Human Resource School for Teresa, June eleventh and twelve.
Discussion. Call the table.
Hi.
Are you opposed? Anything else?
Okay.
Questions? All right, move to new business. We've got part-time to the pool, so we gotta review pool pass policies for Amy and Dana.
Okay, good evening. Um, I think Teresa must have gave you the pool policies. We were talking about trying to define the family path just because it's. Families have changed over the years. It's not, you know, just mom, dad, children, it's, you know, maybe they have guardianship over grandkids or whatever, so. We just had some issues with it, so we would just kind of want to make it clear to everyone, um, and be fair. But also understand that not everybody can all be included in a family path, you know, whether it's cousins or. You know, friends from, for the summer, so Teresa found a path that I think fits the best for defining. Um, it says two adults that live together, whether they are married or not. Can be foster parents, guardians, grandparents, if they live together in the same household year round. Um, because sometimes that could change, you know, like summer, seasonal, Christmas. Um, all kids in the same household will also be included under, under the age of eighteen, um, whether they're biological, adopted, or stepfoster. And so that kind of, you know, cause some people, I mean, we've had people who say they're engaged, but they're engaged for like five years. So we just want to make it a little bit more defined. I mean, so when they come up and they say, oh, yeah, you know, we're. We're married or now we're engaged or, we, so this kind of helps, it's still. It's not like a perfect, because some people will say, yeah, we're married or, I, so. It's just hard, um, but this is kind of the best that we've come across that will help. You know, because we still want to make it a family path. We want to make it affordable. Um, you know, we just don't want you single passes, because, I mean, it is nice for family to, because I feel like a pool in the summer should be. Everybody should be able to go to the pool, so I like it.
Position of a family is solid. My concern is a family pass will include two adults and all children under the age of eighteen that live year round in the same household. So does that mean if I'm, I live with my dad during the school year and I go live with my mom in the summer, I don't get included in that family pass?
I'm living with your mom. Um, technically.
Speaking from experience.
Yeah, I mean, that.
If you don't feel like part of the family, I'm not even on the family.
Jade is there, Travis?
I know. See, that's where we're having trouble because there's always gonna be an exception and that's.
Oh, I've heard that my whole life.
Um, yeah.
Just, that's very specific.
It is, it is.
Year round is a long time.
Well, true, I mean.
So that'd be my only concern is.
Right.
What if it just said a family pass will include two adults and all children?
Under the age of eighteen.
Under the age of, age of ten, uh, live in the same household.
There you go.
That's what it says.
Because we have people that say cousins are living there, you know what I mean? It's not just, oh, yeah, our cousins are staying for the summer, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I said, we run into that problem, though, that we have, yeah, like I said, our cousin was gonna stay for two weeks with us, so now they want to get in under the family pass and whatnot.
That's why we put the year round because they're guardianship.
I don't think you're gonna be able to catch every situation or any dynamics.
Family pass will include two adults and all biological children under the age of eighteen that live in the same household.
Then you gotta adopt.
That's what I mean.
Three and eighteen now, it's kind of a large world, I mean.
Do you guys suggest you change the year round to the swim season?
Doesn't hurt because it's not gonna fly out on the math swim season. No, I would say that we could give Teresa and Amy discretion to finish up this the way they need to. And define a family pass.
I think that's a perfect idea.
They'll figure it out.
Great, okay. Okay, cool. So then we're going to manage a certification. So for me, I know, um, I'm just always, like, when I applied, I just was manager. And so then a couple of years ago, they wanted me to lifeguard because we were short lifeguards and I'm like forty-eight years old. I don't want a lifeguard at forty-eight. So I did it, but it wasn't something I really, I mean, I applied for manager. I don't want a lifeguard and I know they're short. But still, that's not what I wanted to do. So I, um, we came up with this online course, which, you know, we did that. I just feel it's not necessary for what, um, Barb does. We do the two-year first aid, um, CPR training. Every two years we have to recertify and I feel like that is suffice for what I'm doing, um. Because Barb goes through all that stuff, like what if this, you know, scenario, and you're not gonna get every scenario, even on the online class. But for what we're doing, you know, in small town, I feel the CPR and the life for the, the managers is plenty. And I don't feel like we need to do that as well, so I was gonna try and get that taken off the, um, requirement.
I, I echo what, um, Barb said earlier. You don't want to see me up in the pool. That's the way it should be. So is this any, is there any legal ramifications for this?
No, I mean, this is a requirement the city put on. I, it's nothing that was required.
That you had to be certified to be a lifeguard?
No, 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 I've just always been manager, but years before, because we were short guards, they wanted me to get a lifeguard certification to be a, a lifeguard and I don't, no, I'm. I'm over that.
Yeah, so it was talked about years ago, maybe have our pool managers get lifeguard certified as well to be backups for the lifeguards, but. Our pool managers are not teenagers, they're older, they're older, but, you know. They, of course, they did want to go through the training, love the lifeguard training, it's a strenuous training. So in lieu of that, um, we come up with taking this online management course, lifeguard management course. Um, so that's been required for the managers for the last few years of CPR certified and getting this online management course they've been getting. Um, I haven't taken the course. Amy could tell you a little bit more what it covers.
I've done it. It's very time consuming. It's about a six hour, if your videos, I mean, the first time I took it, it took us forever just because. Why, why? You had to watch videos, yeah. But, um, then the last time I think I took it, it was like about three and a half, four hours and. For me, that, I just feel it's redundant. I mean, I feel we, we cover our basics with Barb. Cause she's gonna, we do a lifeguard training that's about three hour, or not a lifeguard, CPR training that's three hours and that goes over. A lot of the scenarios and for what I do, um, I just kind of make sure everyone else is kind of doing their job. And I cover that with my assistant managers, so.
We'd still require managers to be CPR certified?
I could do all that, because that gives them the first aid training and everything.
So we're short lifeguards rather than have you go out and guard just to keep the pool on disposal, cool? Right? Which still generates some buzz and.
Well, I wouldn't be, you need a manager in.
You need somebody at the table.
I wouldn't be a lifeguard anyway, exactly, and that was kind of my point the first time. I'm like, I'm not gonna lifeguard, so.
Any motions? Do we need a motion on that?
Well, so right now it says in the job application that this certification is required, so. You know, I guess as of this year, it's right now I have to get that certification. Um, Amy's asking you guys if it can be waived. But the application says it, so it's, if you want to waive it, it's up to you.
We're talking about two different things earlier, right? Right? One CPR certification, right?
Yeah.
That's what's going to stand, and then, and then there's a lifeguard management certification, right? That's part of two.
Yes.
And that was just added a few years ago. And that was only added because we were trying to do the lifeguard to get more, for me to do others and I didn't want a lifeguard, so that's why they added that online.
Are you CPR certified?
Yes, right now. I, well, this year I have to do it because it's every two years we have to be certified, so I just called Barb today to get a class. Cause I need to get mine recertified for the last two years.
I would move that we waive this, require the lifeguard certifications for managers.
Second?
And is this just Amy or is this Amy and you have assistance?
So be any of the assistants.
I have assistance too, and then, yeah. But they all have to be, I mean, CPR certified and most of the assistants this year are.
Lifeguards.
Are lifeguards, yeah.
Cause, yeah, we have it.
All right, you have a motion, second? Discussion? Who? Brenneman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Okay, this is my last one. It's the pool uniforms. I've always been asked by the lifeguards, they want to, um. Instead of having one-pieces, because they told me they're uncomfortable. I don't have a problem with bikinis or the, it's a sport bra. The only difference from what I can tell was, you know, because Wild Water West wears them. And they say it's a pain to go to the bathroom with a one-piece, they, you know, I get it, I'm not. But they've asked me if they, if they, if I can take it to council, if they can get a bikini. It's basically a sport bra. No, it's not, it's not skimpy, it's just that their stomachs are showing instead.
Still the uniform, like it have, be decided on by you and Teresa to all be ordered from the same place type of thing?
We get everything on shield, so they just go in and, we pick it out and they go in and order the size that they need.
Do you need a motion? Yeah, so basically, this is in our pool policy book. This is in our pool policy book, says the lifeguard uniforms, um, have to be, um, selected by the pool manager and approved by the city administrator. But then it also says no two-piece swimsuit, swimsuits can be worn by any pool personnel, so. We would need to change our policy book if you guys want. So I do need a motion for that.
I've never made a motion, but.
I feel much more comfortable.
I make a motion to approve two-piece swimsuits for the pool personnel.
Okay, so I can change it.
All right, gentlemen, you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, discussion? All right, we'll go on. Brenneman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes, will you let us know if, uh, you give any complaints about the two-piece suits?
I will, but you won't hear it from my lifeguard, so that's, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna keep on moving on to new business. Um, we got discussed drainage on the north side of State Horn Drive.
For this, I'll just jump in right here. Yeah, let's see, one, two, three. Three in attendance and I have conversation with a fourth and a fifth as well as. Nelson, you got some conversation, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
This is my suggestion, this is my, you did too. This is my, this was my idea to be proactive. Um, it also stems from a conversation I had with Scott Mathiase last fall regarding, um, that drainage way. And it's been twenty-five years or better, I s- I guess, since that development went in. Would that be accurate?
Twenty-five years, yeah.
So like all drainage ways, it's silting in and just filling with sediment and other stuff. It's got a lot of cattails and whatnot in it and as we improve Ninth Street, that, our Bandermark, that drainage is gonna. It's gonna continue to go flow down ninth like it currently does into the pond on the south corner of the. corner of the Great Life property. But then from there, outlets to this drainage way. I don't see, I don't see, um, the drainage isn't gonna magically make itself better. So the suggestion when I brought this to Teresa's attention was, if the cities don't need to do anything about it, there needs to be an easement. And that's why we're here, to discuss that easement for the city. That would allow the city then, given the right conditions, frozen hard, dry enough to go in and bring that back to its state from twenty-five years ago or whenever it was first designed.
Yeah, because currently, that drainage area is all on private property. And there are no easements through there. So I've talked with our insurance company, our attorney, I mean, we legally can't go in there and do anything, um, you know, it's a liability issue there. So without an easement, we can't do anything at this point. So if the city were to do anything, we would have to gain at the minimum an easement, not ownership of the property.
So I talked to Scott today. Scott Mathias, over the notes. He asked a couple of questions, so I asked him just what you said, Travis. Does it ever dry up? So can you get in there? And he says, he can recall since they've lived there, that it is ever dry up. So I don't know that there'd be a point where you'd get equipment in there to work. Now, here's the second thing, and maybe Mitch, you can help answer this. If the homeowners decided that they wanted to get this thing dredged, is there EPA requirements? Is it a wet, I mean, what has to happen?
So if, if you guys had this easement and you did a project there, you know, it would typically be a core for the weapon requirements. They would consider this a temporary impact. They allow you to go in and, and dredge wetland areas like this and without having to, you have to get their approval to do it.
Yeah.
That's pretty straightforward. Um, as far as getting in there, Sioux Falls has a lot of drainage ways that they maintain like this, and they do a dredging project every year. They tend to do them during the winter when things are froze up, so they can get equipment in there easier.
Okay.
Um, so that would maybe be something they'd consider. But yeah, there's, there's a way to get in there and clean them up and get them to a state that will, that'll drain better.
So with the, with Great Life's property, the golf course, is there a, uh, Scott says there's a, is there a culvert underneath there that runs into this?
Yeah, there's a, I believe there's a culvert. So if you're looking at that detention pond.
Yeah.
On the, kind of the southeast side of that pond, I believe there's a culvert that, that outlets that pond, like it's high enough. Close to the south and east end of this, close drainage area.
And that detention pond, I think our, the docks show artwork going all the way to the culvert on the north side.
Yeah, so our project with the abandoned land gaming project, we're gonna be crossing, the golf course's property, crossing that, that cart path that you see there. And basically, putting in the new swim sewer outlet in the west corner of that detention facility, that will outlet our project.
Will Art permit us to do the work in here, or would we be looking at a third-party crane?
I think it'd be a third-party. Because there's really no need to work in there. You know, like, everything would have to, everything you try to take out, there's gotta go with that lift station area. That's the only way you can get it out of there. So you'd be probably in with, um, maybe a excavator and skiddy on, you know, down below. It can just kind of, it'd take a lot of work to get stuff out of there. I don't, yeah, I don't think we'd have equipment to do it.
So this goes to the lift station?
There's a, this, that Sage Horn lift station there, there's about probably fifty foot in there, something like that, that, that we mow and take care of, that's actually land that, um, was it about six years?
Oh, that would be your access in.
That'd be the only, that is the only access in and out of that drainage area. Because the, along the Colton Road, that's steep.
Yeah, I got you on.
So you, it takes some equipment.
Otherwise, I wonder if the detention pond flows across, or underneath Colton Road.
Yeah, yeah, flows under there.
Concrete probably.
But we actually take, talk about making this an action item for two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty.
You'd probably be in there in the middle of winter.
I mean.
I mean, I, I think your, your first course of action would be to obtain the easements. You know, because I do think that, you know, wh- when I look at these drainage easements, wherever you have public water going through there, you, the city should probably have a responsibility there to maintain, maintain that. And so I think that'd be your first step, is to get the easements, you know, and where these people can get those. And it sounds like they're willing to give them, if they want to see some improvements back there. But I think that's your first course. You can't really do a project until you have those.
And it would vary, I know someone asked me, well, how many, how many feet of my property, um, would be in the easement area? And it looks like it would vary. And some of that property goes way further north than I, than I even realized. So it would be variable, be the answer.
Yeah, we, I mean, if, we'd have to do a survey through there too, to a degree, just to, it still looks like there's even maybe a structure in the corner of the one lot. Um, so we'd have to kind of figure out where.
I have a survey you can use.
What's that?
I have a survey you can use.
Yeah?
Pretty much unsolid.
Do, does everybody, does anybody besides Deb Peters have a sprinkler system back there? Back, you do? You see an issue with that?
Uh, our sprinkler's the system.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to come, I, I can't hear.
Part of our system is already taken over by the drainage ditch.
I'm sorry, I, I miss the device, I.
I'm Teresa Mathias.
Yes.
And we are at seven oh one, we're at the corner. And we have, a lot of the drainage ditch comes through. We have. And our, our sprinkler system has been taken over by the drainage ditch.
It has.
It's probably a good foot, our sprinkler has a foot now into it, and it wasn't. When we put it in, it was, they were probably two, three feet from the edge of the drainage ditch and it's come. That bothered the property.
So is there any way, if, if this was done, not to damage your sprinkler system?
You know, right now, we would just like to have it done. I, our sprinkler system isn't.
Well, when, when you, when you, you draft those documented, you just make a notation in there that if there's any sprinkler system, that it gets put back.
Yep.
But we easily have a thirty-foot wall of water that comes into the backyard. And then it's a good ten feet, and it comes into, along the whole north side there. So from the golf course and the retention pond, we have about a thirty-foot wall coming down into the yard. And then a good ten feet along the side that runs all the way to Aspen Hills, it's to the Colton Road. To the end of ours.
The weird question is, are the property owners in support of this? Because if you are, our next step is gonna be to direct Stockwell, we're gonna spend some money and have them, you know, draft, go through the work of obtaining these easements.
Yeah, our only concern would be our fence and our trees.
Sure, sure.
Um, I can tell you, you guys built that really great drainage off Sage Horn there that comes between Peters. That's beautiful. But as soon as it rains heavy, it sits there because it does not go from Peters to Colton, does not flow at all. So you've got a really good drainage now at Colton, and you've got the really good drainage at Peters, but there's nothing, I think all that lives in there is muskrats and there's no flow that goes there. I think there's kids, because our lot was so vacant for so long, I think kids will put plywood houses in there, I mean, it's full of just.
We wouldn't have to keep the, the little walkway out there, would we?
No, that was only there until you built the bike path. And since you did, since you got the bike path, you could take the walkway. But that was when I wouldn't allow my kids to walk on Colton Road.
I didn't lose that was.
It was aw, Alex built it, it was awesome. You know, we're concerned about the mosquitoes, it's so wet down there. We're just concerned with the mosquitoes, we're concerned with the fertilizer pesticides that's washing in from the golf course, you know, into that drainage ditch. It's all a big disaster. The muskrats my dogs bring up to the door. Clean up, big, big muskrats.
My biggest question for Craig and for Mitch is, how many other drainage areas do we have in town? And how do we come upon, upon decisions of saying, okay, now we're gonna take responsibility out of it, just because?
There's quite a few, I think one thing persons really should consider too, if we end up cleaning these out, uh, spray the cattails. Keep them, keep them sprayed down, because that's just gonna plug them back up again. Get the weeds out of there.
One property owner said, he kinda liked it.
They like them, I know, but, they like them, but I think if you're gonna spend the money, you need to, to take care of the problem, you know?
But I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, is that typical?
I'm the, I'd say on the subdivision side, our new subdivisions, we have, we do take over drainage easements such as this, and they get dedicated. Um, we're starting to see, I think, like.
First city property.
Yeah, and we just took one over on Crestman. And whether they dedicate the property or leave an easement, you know, that, that differs between, between property to property, it seems. But like I said, in our new subdivisions, we definitely have these types of things that the city is gonna be taking over in the future. In the area town that's already developed, that's been developed for a while, I don't know how many of this situation that we necessarily have, but without.
So, I mean, it's, it's really part of our infrastructure, this example. I mean, we're gonna drain all that water down that way. And if it gets worse, it starts plugging up and backing up, what's that do?
Yeah, it just, it, you know, if it backs up, you've just got a nuisance there, you know, and, and to me, this is just cleaning those ditches out as a service that, you know, the city would typically do for anywhere where there's public water going through it. We, we have some areas where, you know, you don't have, it's just backyards that butt up to each other, and it's just there, that local water that you're dealing with. There, we would pursue those types of easements. Anywhere, I think it's just good policy practice to pursue the easements where there's what we call public water, if it's discharged from a right-of-way or anything like that.
This isn't gonna apply to North Main.
Oh, yeah, that'd be private.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, there's, there's a lot of areas in town that have drainage issues, but none of them are, not standing up to me to equate this.
Yeah, and North, North Main's a good example because the, there are easements there. There's drainage easements for where the water dumps from Mickelson Road into those backyards. There's a drainage easement there that.
You have to take it south.
Or South Main.
You have to take it south.
Thinking like, just south of the ghetto.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, I don't think this opens us up to the issue. I'll make a motion to pursue the easements.
Yeah, I, I think what I'd like to do with that is present you guys with a proposal for us to be able to do that project and work on it, so we can provide that for the next one.
Sure, proposal, pursue, move forward, whatever you want to call it. Let's go to the next step.
Brenneman, second back, Keel?
So, um, like Rhonda called all the property owners, and at this point, would it be a good idea to give them a call again, telling them about, you know, or, you know, this, this motion? If we do, if it is passed?
Well, why don't we, um, have them present the proposal to you guys? And if you guys pass the proposal, then yes, we'll have to contact every property owner because, I mean, Stockwell's believing to get access to there, survey it, and go from there.
Feel free to spread the word.
Yeah.
All right, Stockwell, do you have a motion, second?
Are you saying I have a big mouth?
No, not really, I mean, no. No, you quit. Tell Deb Peters this is one of the.
Motion, wanna hear a motion again?
Um, to, to pursue getting the easement proposal from Stockwell's.
Okay. All right, Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
All right, next one up, I believe, Jones, you probably have.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's supposed to say, sorry, please don't give me that.
It's a dumb guy, look.
I had a resident, I know, I read, but I'm doing my due diligence. I have a resident send me a nice, uh, email asking about the yard, uh, waste site. You can see it in Teresa's, uh, recap, she put the points that he was wanting to discuss. Craig and I have had a discussion about this. Um, yeah, you're right, we've talked about the dirt pile and the rock pile forever. It'd be really great to put them someplace else. As Craig and I discussed, right now, we really don't have a good place to go put them. That's what I'm going to, uh, report. He really thinks we should move the grass dump. That, that's been up and down the river two or three times. It'd be great to have it, uh, someplace else, but we have a great location, and now we've kept it under control. I think that's gonna be our, gonna have to be our place. The third one Craig, we talked about was trees. And I don't know, you told me you planted just some extras that you had, and.
Yeah, the ones around the, apparently, he wants, so around the sewer plant right now, our lift station, inside the fence are some pines that are growing there. And what it, kinda, I think he was under the assumption that they used to all be pines to block that area. Them trees all just got planted by random ones that I had left over for third graders and just stuck them in there. That's why they're all different sizes. It's just, I just threw them off to just to kind of break up that area a little bit.
And that went up a little bit. I, I told the gentleman that I would bring this up and we would have a discussion, so.
Give me a look at putting trees in that area, wouldn't you?
Yes.
Yeah, and me and Arden were even talking about that. The whole thing is right now, even if we, and we did plant a few trees in there, you know, but you plant, even if you plant lilacs in there, something that's gonna block the view good, seven years, we might be a whole different location with this. Trees are an absolute no good for, you know. By the time they get big enough to block the view of there, this plant probably won't exist.
It's also park area and walkway, I mean.
Yeah.
We don't plant trees for us, we plant it for the future.
Oh, man. But, but you wouldn't wanna have lilacs around the whole area there, then take it out, there, have that, have a little fortress inside your parks, you'd end up tearing them out, you're gonna have.
We definitely want to thin them out. Make sure there be kids in there.
Lights.
Uh, the other point, I believe Teresa in his note was kids, uh, kids ripping through there.
Yeah.
And did you talk to the deputy about that, or should we?
I, I haven't talked to him, yeah, I was like for the discussion.
That was the other, that was the other point. So, yeah, it says dirt piles, kids ripping around, throwing rocks. Anyway, I just wanted to bring it up and let everyone know that people are still asking the question. I will, if respond, I told him that we would discuss it.
It is, you know, I think it is. If we come across a better place for it at some point, it'd be nice to move it.
Correct.
Like, but we've been on that road, I don't know where that better place is.
Yeah.
It'd be a different conversation if that wasn't there when that house got built.
Right, so we've had that discussion.
But it was. Kind of like, build a house next to a quarry, and then you say, hey, you should shut that quarry down, because it's dirty.
Or a farm.
I feel for them.
Right, anyway, that's it. I just, I just wanted to.
We're, we're three, buddy.
Uh, when we, we get a pretty deal on bollard trees?
Um, third rod, we're on a hundred, a fif, a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty five dollars a tree. That's with a one-year warranty planted, um, pruned a little bit.
I mean, for fifteen hundred bucks, we throw up ten trees along that? I don't know how many are out there, I can't see on Google, or how many are on the north side of our bike trailer. Probably a few less because some of those were ash.
Yeah.
But I mean, if we wanna move forward.
And pu, and plant some trees, yeah. Because we did actually at one time talk about putting, uh, tree berm along the.
On the top side.
Side, top side up there behind the grass dump.
It's not gonna change anything, tree's gonna, you're gonna cut it up, so you can mow under it, so you're still.
Love you.
Trees are, I like trees, trees are good for an Arbor City.
Yeah, we wanna put some type of lilac or pine tree in there that you wouldn't have to worry about mowing underneath, you just let the grass not grow, you know, or shade, so.
We might have to have a rendezvous out there and just want some green spots, Craig, I've got something.
Sounds good.
Tree rendezvous.
All right. Well, that's a.
There might be, I, I didn't want to bring that up, but there may be.
It's been a good segue. We're gonna go into proclamation, Arbor Day. So, I don't know what'd you say, how was that, how was that quote you just said?
Yeah, she said, baby, plant it for the future. Plant it for the future.
That's not in here, I didn't see that. I'll quick read, I'm gonna read a portion of this, so.
You don't have to read the whole.
So, the proclamation is, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jake Sterling Morton proposed the Nebraska Board of Agriculture a special day reset aside for the planting of trees. This holiday is called Arbor Day, and is first served with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Skipping a few whereas statements, now therefore, I am here remitting Mayor of the City Hartford, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, as Arbor Day in the City of Hartford, and I urge all citizens, even Craig and Jones, to support efforts to care for our treated women's, and to support the city's community forestry program, and further urge all citizens to plant trees and gladden their hearts and promote the well-being of the present and future generations.
Booyah.
There we go. Next one is our Silver Star Banner Day. Whereas the City of Hartford is always honored the sacrifice of men and women in the armed forces. And the Silver Star Families of America was formed to make sure we remember the blood sacrifice of our wounded and ill by designing and manufacturing a Silver Star banner flag. Now therefore, I do remitting City Mayor of the City of Hartford, do hereby proclaim my appreciation of the Silver Star Families of America, and honor their commitment to our wounded armed forces members. I hereby declare May first, as Silver Star Banner Day, official day to honor the wounded and the ill soldiers of the City of Hartford. And the last one, those who have P and Z near their heart. This one is International Code Council Building Safety Proclamation. Whereas the City of Hartford is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disasters. Skipping now, we're to the bottom. Now therefore, I do remitting Mayor of the City Hartford, South Dakota, you proclaim the month of May two thousand nineteen as Building Safety Month accordingly. And I encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation of Building Safety Month activities. There are those.
Could you send a copy of that, or the one oh eight month?
The what? One oh eight month?
Yeah. What, his last.
One block east.
Think it published.
Alright, the next thing is, we've got our Arbor Day's Honoration Tree City USA. The award letter, we can go through this again, how many years in a row is this now, Craig?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years. Do we have, I was just, maybe I missed them, do we have new signs for the Edge of Town for this at all, or did they, have they done anything special for that?
They, actually, the last package we got from them, um, was a tiny plaque. A sticker or something like that. They cut back on their funds, so they're not giving away flags or hats or anything like that packets anymore. If we wanna Tree City USA flag, we have to purchase it ourselves now.
You gotta purchase a tree, who's purchasing stuff, I don't even know who's purchasing. I've got a tree that's crazy.
We were first kind of joined up, and here we go, something that they were gonna do for the city too, but it's more what the city does for. I mean, it's a good deal, but it's, we don't see the plaques or anything like that, I don't know, highways anymore.
I think you guys have done a really nice job of making sure that that's always maintained, and that we're, and that we're doing everything we need to do. It's kind of a neat little, little bullet point, there's only thirty-five hundred Tree City USAs. Um, but still, if it's something that's, you're like, hey, it's time to.
I think it's a good idea, I mean, it's good to have, but it's, you know, we just gotta spend so many, so much in trees every year, which isn't a big deal, we plan on doing that all the time, anyway, hopefully they keep going that way, so. Little bit of paperwork, caring, suns in, and stuff like that.
It's okay.
That's okay.
All in line, so, it's easy.
I'd burn up as much trees and paperwork.
Yeah, get Craig's minutes.
Trees are for the future.
Trees are for the future. Alright, easy to do. Do you have anything, for example, a section at this time?
I don't.
The only other thing I thought of, really, thank yous up here, I don't know if we do. Um, we can get this together before next meeting, it'd be nice to put a thank you together for, for the fire department and Sunshine Foods for, and anybody else you're thinking of for their efforts, um, work power is out. For Su Valley Energy as well, but, um, we can get those together the year before next meeting, maybe pass them around again.
We sent in some flowers, you showed the Pat Smiths for your.
Just to suggest that.
You know, I thought about that, it was easy to justify when Jerry passed away, 'cause Maryland's, uh, still on our election board. Are we gonna start sending to every past member, I mean?
Is there that many?
You start thinking of all council people, mayors, P and Z.
Good question.
Did we send a, to Maryland?
We just did a card.
We just carded, we just did a card.
Can we send a card to Andrea?
We could send it to the family.
Family.
Andrea, did you have a spread pass?
Hmm?
Last Saturday.
Yeah, I just, I'm like, yesterday.
Funerals tomorrow, Thursday, funerals.
Years that she served?
Her entire life.
I think she served longer than Jerry did, mayor.
No, she was never mayor.
No, 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 what I'm saying is.
No, just served the city longer.
Yeah, she did.
Jerry was like two or four years, she was on the city for seventeen as, on my board.
We can have a short memory, but not as close to Jerry's.
And she was a.
I mean, it's not a big deal, we got cards, you guys wanna send out a card.
It's at least send out a, a card.
I mean, I'm fine with that.
You bring a good point out, but.
I think Mohammed people are gonna be upset when he sent it for you.
We'll take them as they go, how's that?
Hmm?
We'll take them as they go.
Take them as they go.
As they go.
Good way to put it, there you go.
Something more kitchen.
It would be hard, in Pat Smith's. Everybody in the meeting knows Pat, I mean, you, Pat, he was, uh, they knew she served quite a bit on the city, it'd be hard to compare that to, to the one, like, oh, I don't know, maybe they were, I don't know.
I don't know.
Why don't we just say, I think it's fine.
I think we could just fight flowers.
Flower fur?
That's what I think.
Hundred dollar budget. But, I mean, I don't know what flowers cost.
Hundred dollars, really?
I always tell my wife, they're too expensive.
But, I, I guess the reason I say that, Teresa, is I can make you a list of people that have served on the council, and have served as mayor, that, that were not nearly as plugged into this community as, as, and, true, Barney were.
Oh, definitely.
And I think you can make the case that Jerry was too. And so, like, I mean, if you gotta do it one by one, just, on whether or not they were plugged into the community, so be it.
Yep, we can listen to, kind of, what you'll order.
Down here? Flowers.
Usually we get it from Sunshine, we can put on there if you'd like.
I would.
I would just. If they, do they make air, or we can do that?
Whatever you.
Okay.
Yeah, just one, just this one though.
Do we have a motion with Eric?
Yep.
Sorry.
All of them?
Aye.